All right, if everybody is in a good spot. It's seven o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Legits. A pledge of legits to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Would be appropriate to recognize that Mr. Light is joining you electronically, participating electronically for personal reasons from Mr. Light?
Maine.
From Maine.
That's correct. And also, we are, Ms. Ritter is not here this evening. Steph Ritter is absent. So that is the role for the group. Adoption of the agenda? If I can have a motion for any changes?
Can I make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next is the minutes.
Mr. Light, I need to make sure we're recording your vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Gary. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes. If anyone has a motion or any changes for the minutes?
Seeing that there are no comments being made about it, I'd recommend that we adopt the minutes of the last meeting as written.
Thank you. And any second for that?
Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Sisk. Any changes or discussion? I looked them over. I thought they looked good. And I was glad we had such good minutes for June. That really came in helpful at the last board meeting. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. No public hearings on the schedule tonight. That takes us to public comment. Anyone that wishes to speak, please come to the microphone and address your comments to the commission. If you could keep your comments to five minutes and identify yourself by name and the district in which you reside.
My name is Karen Hunt, Jackson District. So I'm speaking to the Contractor Yard proposed ordinance. I appreciate that the latest draft ordinance for the Contractor Yard addresses several issues raised previously, such as removing the primary highway exclusion, excluding conservation districts from consideration, adding the rear and side setbacks, adding language referencing adequate entrances and roadway dimensions, adding contractor license requirements. However, I have a number of concerns with other aspects as they're currently proposed. Why, I'm wondering why we're deleting our current definition for automobile graveyard, which has a limit of two inoperable vehicles in our current definition of junkyard, and then combining them into a new definition that increases the number of inoperable vehicles to five. If we want to add a definition for junk, I'm wondering why we don't just address that? I'm wondering also how we arrived at the number of 50 vehicles and pieces of equipment? That seems like a lot. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate mechanism to impose limitation on size and scope of a contractor yard. We are not distinguishing in any way between light or heavy vehicles and equipment or specific types. This is done in other jurisdictions, and I provided some reference material tonight on that. Establishing a maximum square foot area covered by vehicles, which our ordinance defines as a motor vehicle trailer or semi-trailer, does not address the scale of a particular vehicle or piece of equipment. There is a significant distinction in the impact of the number of smaller mass-sized vehicles or equipment versus heavy commercial use ones. And I provided a handout with some examples for context and consideration on that. I also wonder how we arrived at 20,000 square feet of total covered storage for Level 1, which is separate and apart from the vehicles and equipment storage and separate from other uses that could also be on a particular site? I'm just wondering if that's appropriate or does a lesser maximum amount seem like it might be better in scale for a Level 1? Per calculator, I found a one-car garage is about 200 square feet. So for visualization purposes, 20,000 square feet would be 100 one-car garages, and that seems like an awful lot to me. Currently, there is no maximum defined height for covered storage. Our ordinance ranges from 35 feet to 60 feet. And I'm just wondering, do we want a 20,000-square-foot, 50-foot tall, 20,000-square-feet, 50-foot-tall covered structure in our highway commercial districts? How would we effectively screen a 50- or 60-foot covered structure in a commercial district? How are we taking into consideration other byright structures that could also be present, like access lanes, existing driveways and parking areas, topographical considerations, et cetera, on a property where we're setting the upper limits for the construction yard portion of that property's collective use? There is nothing that appears to specify setbacks from a well or septic drain field, a stream, a pond, or other environmentally sensitive area. We've had situations in other special-use permits where a septic drain field was in a portion of the driveway or parking area or encroaching into a floodplain. Should heavy, large heavy equipment, storage, and use require more of a setback in certain circumstances? And I'd reference Principal 7 of our comp plan. As currently proposed, I do not see where we are addressing lighting compliance with the Dark Skies Initiative, and I'd reference Principal 3 of our comp plan. Chemical spills and lighting plans, et cetera, are at administrative discretion for Level 1, but these issues could be impactful because of the smaller minimum acreage of 10 acres. Should this be required? Hazardous chemical use or storage is not mentioned at all. What does an acceptable light, noise, dust, vermin, smoke, fumes, and odors mitigation plan look like? Where are we clarifying that? How would staff assess whether such a plan was acceptable? Is it appropriate to permit a commercial contractor yard of a Level 1 or Level 2 scale in residential village or our five districts? If other jurisdictions are limiting contractor yards to 10,000 square feet, would allowing larger yards here in Rappahannock potentially encourage out-of-county contractors to be load decating these commercial uses here? I think this proposed draft ordinance could be further improved. It is important that we are thoughtful about this, and if we need to continue to refine it a bit more to make it right, I think we should take the time to do that. I'd ask that you consider that this draft is a good step forward but could benefit from some additional work here before it is ready for final consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron McAlloch, Jackson District. Same subject. In the definitions, and I've mentioned this before, is that under contractors' yards, there's still no definition for what exactly is a contractor in, you know, applying to this, you know, particular subject. But also, in reading through it, you refer to automobile in the automobile and graveyard, junkyard area, whatever. The word needs to be vehicle, not automobile. There's, if you start looking at definitions or whatever, motor vehicles and are in automobiles are very specific. We could have somebody that has, for whatever reason, 50 boats that they want to store on their property. Under automobiles and motor vehicles, that would not be covered. Under the word vehicle, if you look it up, it covers aircraft, boats, trains, the whole schmear. And it's, you know, that's the word we need to have in there because that, we were covering everything. Also, in the, in the definition for junkyard, the term junk means older scrap, copper, brass, rope. Then it gets into things like rags, paper, trash, rubber, debris, waste. Those are landfill items. They don't, junkyards, junkyards are sort of a recycling-type area at times. But we don't want, you know, and we, and we need those. People need to be able to have access to that kind of material. But we don't want to allow rags, paper, trash, rubber, debris, and waste in what we consider to be a junkyard. Going to the regulations itself in two different places. And this is, this is like being realistic about what a contractor's yard is. In that particularly when you have, if you're a contractor, you have a number of vehicles or whatever, you're going to have inoperable vehicles. And what they're there for is their parts. Their parts for your other vehicles when something breaks down or whatever. And we've got, so to not have any unoperable vehicles in a contractor's yard is not realistic. So we need to come up with a percentage of, or some kind of a number, so that, yes, somebody that's running one or whatever, they do have the ability to have a couple of vehicles around that are sitting there and know they're no longer operable, but they, they're there because they need, you know, at times they're going to need the parts off those or whatever. And another thing that is not in the junkyard area that should be, because it's, it's not really considered as equipment, are trailers, tractor trailers, the storage containers or whatever. And, and do we need to be specific in that area in that those also are, you know, can be regulated in those areas? Because otherwise, if they're not mentioned, we really have a hard time controlling them. And I think, oh, the other thing I was, I was going to ask about because it was part of the, part of the material provided or whatever, is the fact that in Rappahannock County, there are only four contractors' yards. I travel around this whole county. There's a lot of contractor yards in Rappahannock County. And, you know, how are, how are we going to, to deal with that situation if we change the regulation? Because, I mean, that's, you know, Greg Williams has got two of them, and the other one's All-Star Septic. And I'm not sure who this, who Andre Abercesis or whatever is.
It's the pool service company.
What?
It was the pool service company.
Oh, okay. Okay, but, but that's, but that's it. But, I mean, you all drive around the county. I mean, there are, there's what I consider to be a contractor's yard right on 522 at Massey's Corner down there. There are all these snowplows and all this equipment parked in there, and there's a garage. And that's a contractor's yard. But I don't see a permit on this thing for that, you know, that particular operation. And, you know, you can't, we can't just be piecing on it. I mean, everybody's operating under the same rules. So if we're going to do this, we're going to have to somehow deal with existing yards that have never been, under, under the present regulations have never gotten a permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anita Ramos, Hampton District. A slightly different subject. The Falkir newspaper the other day had an article about somebody who is filling dirt on their property in large, large, large amounts. Some years ago, in Loudoun County, somebody else was doing the same thing. And it was taking the dirt out of Fairfax and Arlington and Prince William and Loudoun itself. And these guys tried to figure out a place to put stuff. And so they found some farmer that said, oh, fill it in. The guy in Loudoun, I remember, said he was building a polo field, which was probably almost as high as this building. And the guy over in Falkir is saying he's starting a sod farm. Give me a break. Neither of these counties has, have some way or had some way, I don't know about Loudoun now, had some way to deal with the situation, get ahead of it. It's probably an extra paragraph somewhere. Not a big deal, but look and see what other people are doing to stop this because we're the next one down the road, so to speak. So just think about it. When Falkir tells the guy, you can't do it anymore, or anybody else that's doing it, we're next, straight down the road. And that's what I feel too about out-of, out-of-area contractors, as it makes it harder and harder for them to be in other areas. And that's been going on for a while. It's the cost of the land. It's being an industrial zone, things like that. It's getting harder for them, and they're moving further out. I don't have anything against them. You know, my family was union up in New York, so I know all about a lot of other things. But we don't want it to get out of hand. And that's what I'm looking for, something that keeps things under some sort of control. And, you know, the guy that's a sod farm, where they're digging up dirt someplace, that's not soil. It's just dirt. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Luke? All right. And with that, I'll close the public comment period. That takes us to the first item of business, the Contractors' Yard Amendment Discussion. I know we'd had quite a bit of input on this last time, and I was wondering if you could just let us know where Steph was with this, Gary?
Michelle updated the draft ordinance amendment that was shared with the Planning Commission at the earlier meeting and added in items that she heard during the meeting. She bounced it off me. I bounced it back to her. And, and you have that attached now with the, this is, 814-2024 version. Oh, all right. She also made this comparison table, which I did print out for you and put in your space, as I apologize, it's kind of small, to try to help put into picture how the different uses can nest together. And as was presented last time and this time again, all of the numbers, I think, were shaded green, suggesting you can change them to some other number, whether it's 50 vehicles and equipment or some other number, or 20,000 square feet or some other number. And as we discussed last time, this is, these are maximums that have to be threaded through the needle of a public hearing in conditions that are appropriate for a particular parcel. But putting these maximums, putting maximums in makes sense. It constrains it from infinity, which it is today. And you're starting to tighten down the universe of applications that would be valid. So I can, happy to walk through anything if you want to. We're just going to take questions. I can speak to one comment about automobile graveyard.
Right.
That's a turn of phrase for the state, and it's important that we use that. The state authorizes us to adopt ordinances regarding automobile graveyards and junkyards and specifically regulates automobile graveyards. And so when Art updated those definitions, he did so to align them with language in the state code. Doesn't mean that we can't maybe tweak them a little bit, but I think we should probably keep with the same terms, even if we have to define internally what we mean by automobile relative to vehicle and all different sorts of types of equipment. I can speak, which is what we're at it. If it fits into the contractors' yards. Falkir County has been fighting the agricultural dumping of soil in their county, trying to work with the General Assembly to get laws changed. And people are driving their dump truck through the agricultural exemption. And it's been a big struggle.
Why not? It could be.
Yeah. So I are, in, in Rappahannock County, automobile graveyards and junkyards are allowed in industrial zone areas, which we have one. And the intention, I guess the overt intention, intention of this definition is to nail down what is allowed in those two acres or so of land that we have. The kind of the covert reasoning is that if you have a contractors' yard that begins to look like a junkyard or automobile graveyard, then you can more easily say that is not a contractors' yard. That is an automobile graveyard or junkyard, and it's not allowed there. It's only allowed in those two acres over there.
Sure.
And so that's, that's why the definition's being touched at all in this context and conversation. I suppose somebody could rezone land somewhere and make it industrial. They could apply for it.
I just have a question. I guess maybe a comment. Part of dog kennels, a dog kennel that looks like a graveyard that has three travel trailers, a broken-down pony trailer. Where do we pick those up and cover those at?
I can understand where, what site you're probably talking about. We do, we don't disallow people to store a travel trailer on their property. They can't live in it. They can't habitate in it, but you can store it. I don't believe there's a setback requirement for that storage. So it's not ideal. It's something that this body could look at more carefully and decide whether, whether you want to look at it. Accessory structures do have a setback and aren't supposed to be in the front yard, but it's not an accessory. It's, it's not attached to the ground. It's just the storage of a vehicle or trailer. And we don't say that you can't park your cars in the front yard. You can't park your trailers in the front yard.
How many, what's the limit that we can park?
We don't really have a limit for, for storage of things like that. We do, for example, for tractor trailers, we say that you can only have as many tractor trailers as you have licensed drivers, CDL drivers. That was one of the, one of the zoning violations that happened at the contractors' yard down at 211, one of several, that there were several tractor trailers but only one licensed driver. So there are, you know, a few different avenues to use the ordinance to try to get at things. I'm not aware of any in the current ordinance that would allow us to, to, you know, try to cause somebody to move their RV camping trailer off their property. And, and so it's kind of one-size-fits-all. You have a family that also has one, and we want to allow them to have one and store it in the right place. I suppose you could probably say that it's not allowed in the front yard or something like that. Let's change the rules.
Yeah, I guess when they're parked on the beat-out right-of-way, nothing we can do. And then when beat-outs, we'll do nothing about it.
Well, the one you're talking about's not in the beat-out right-of-way. It's in, it's on private property, and there was all, there was a lawsuit about where the property line is in that spot, where somebody pulled over and took pictures. And, and so there's not a lot of right-of-way there.
I find that hard to believe, Gary. But you say it is, it is.
So I, I'll just say that I find it really helpful to have visuals for these descriptions. Do you think there's a way to show scale, acreage to setbacks to number of vehicles? Is there a way to? And then the outdoor versus covered storage? I mean.
Yeah, I think the easiest way.
What's covered storage?
I'm sorry?
What's covered storage?
Roof. It could be no walls or walls.
Whole shed.
Yeah. I think the easiest way to get it.
Cargo container?
Arguably, yes. Yeah.
Sheds.
Sure. If it's associated with a contractor's yard, and that's the complicating thing. This isn't, if you're residents, there's no limit on the number of accessory buildings and sheds that you're allowed to have. You can store all of the residential stuff you want on your property or ag stuff, quite frankly. But as soon as you start storing contractors' business items in it, then it becomes a potential problem. And so for a particular contractors' yard in the county or alleged, that person came in wanting permits for accessory structures. And the permits issued for those accessory structures says on there that, you know, that it's not to be used for contractor storage, and it's for, you know, storage is customarily incidental to residential use. What they do with it, I don't know. Who's going to be looking in and peering in to decide what's actually in there? And so this board, I think, maybe one of the things on your list of items to maybe look at is whether, whether there should be any limitless number of accessory structures allowed on, on a parcel. Seems like it'd be odd if you have a thousand-square-foot home that then you have 40,000 square feet of storage for your home stuff. But getting back to your question, Ms. Smith, I think probably the best way would be to try to photograph instances either in the county or out of the county, and then measure what amount of storage is they represent in the terms of the, of the ordinance outside covered. So then you can take a few different pictures and see, you know, what does this mean? There might be a way to calibrate things.
Yeah, I think, I think the visuals that Karen supplied are helpful. And I think a little, a little more of that could help us define or refine what is best for each category.
I think a fundamental decision for Planning Commission and ultimately the board, and then I guess by extension the public through public hearing, is, you know, what is it that you're seeking to carve in? Right? Or, or exclude from the ordinance? And are you trying to focus things on, you know, making sure you allow the mom-and-pop-type contractor to do things? Or do you want to allow a, like a contractor with 50 employees and many pieces of equipment to find a property in the county, meet appropriate standards, and set up shop? If you don't want to allow that, like, you know, you, the body kind of overtly decided we ought to allow, be, make it easier for those who process agricultural items to set up shop in the county. We should work that into the ordinance so it's easier for them to do it. We're an agricultural community. So you've built that in to the ordinance and said, hey, if you're, if you're doing it to fruit or products that are grown on-site, it's really easy. It's by right. So in the same kind of vein, what is it that you want to allow for this sort of thing? And if there's this view that a G E I or whatever is, would set up a site here that has a big paved area and has 50 vehicles, and we all say, whoa, that's not us, then don't, don't put that in here. Right? So you, you gotta think of, what are we trying to accomplish? And always carve some words around what we're trying to accomplish. And if, if a big thing like that is definitely not in our vision, then, then we need to tailor the words to make sure that it, the boundaries are carved in so tightly that it wouldn't be appropriate.
Thanks, Gary.
Well, I think, so it gets back to, what are you, what are you trying to accomplish? I think is where I look at it. It's kind of a little bit wide open now. Here, you're basically saying you're trying to accommodate the small person that has limited acreage, probably has one to three employees with a five-acre, and that only has 5,000 square feet of outdoor storage. That's, that's pretty small when it comes to an outdoor storage. And 5,000 feet of indoor storage, that's a, you know, that's a building, and it doesn't start to move up in terms of size. But in these other two categories, you're basically recognizing if you want more storage, you've got to have a bigger site that provides more screen and a buffer to the neighbors. And when you put a vehicle or items connected with the business, you list them and say you can have 50 or whatever, I think that's appropriate. When you want to say, well, you can have 10 bobcat-sized vehicles. You can have five pickup-sized, three-grader-sized. I, I think you're going to, trying to micromanage that site. And I just, I think that is impractical for Rappahannock County. Who's going to go out there? I mean, if you get a. I mean, if you get a, a neighbor that's having conflict with this person, you're going to be going out there every week counting vehicles and, and equipment and all that. I think you're, you're doing a lot to protect the county and the community in what, how you structured this with, with the site sizes and, and the buffers and the setbacks you're talking about. I think this goes a long ways to, to provide some integrity to, to, to what you're planning to do. And we had a case in Amosville a couple of years ago that, you know, went south, where we basically say, hey, you know, you're going to take two acres in this site. You're going to define it. You're going to survey it, and you're going to put up a fence, and it's going to happen in here. And, you know, when you define it, I think you've gone a long ways in protecting and providing integrity to, to the community. I think it creates confusion with the staff, confusion with the landowner when, when you have these ambiguities of, you know, which vehicle are you looking at? These, whether it's a big truck, little truck, a trailer, all these kinds of things. It's gee whiz, you know, you get down and say you can have so much tonnage on the site and while you have your vehicle or whatever like that. And we never, we don't have, as Gary said, we're down to two acres of industrial land in the county?
I, it's about that.
Well, you know, that's, that's, you know. I think the original godfathers of the ordinance took care of industrial development in the county. And then I think when we had the Iling plant come up with ownership, we downzoned 15 acres of that to ag in the back.
The front was changed to commercial general.
Yeah, so, you know, eliminated all that land as industrial use. So kind of say that, yeah, it's kind of not a desirable use in Rappahannock County.
Yep. Barring a rezoning that people would find palatable, which is hard to envision.
We can't rezone a, a piece of residential land to a more intense use. I don't see taking ag or residential in turn to get into industrial.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's going to be a, a, a change in the atmosphere of, of what people want in this county. I think everybody's in pretty much harmony that, you know, no more really intense zone than speaking honestly of, of anything, really.
I, I think so too. I, I do wonder, I think Karen brought it up on the commercial retail and business uses on the table for contractor's yard or contractor's office shop yard. It does indicate it's a special exception in RR5. Is that because a couple of them could be cobbled together to equal 10 acres or?
So just because it's RR5 means the minimum lot size is 5 acres. Could be 20 acres or 30 acres or.
And residential village, probably not a five acre.
Well, and, and so this body needs, this, ultimately, the process needs to decide whether is it appropriate to be in a residential zone? The, the, the version that is small contracting business, same lot as house, as your residence? I think that by definition, it ought to be allowed in a residence zone, right? But the other ones, maybe not. Maybe they don't belong there. If you have a situation where you could have more, the impacts of the use would be greater because there's more receptors, right? More, more residences, likelihood of more residences around it to be impacted as opposed to a whole bunch of hayfields.
Gary, did you have anything?
I did, thank you. And I'm sorry, Gary, I put you on the spot, but I want to pick up on a couple of the things brought up in the comments because I think generally we've talked about many of these, like the 50 car limit, that just because it's a, an upper limit doesn't mean that we couldn't make it smaller for a given property and a given use in the process. So I can see how that would work for some of these parameters, if you will, that we've already articulated, but it's not quite as clear to me for some of those that are different. Like, for example, the height limit. You know, I think that's an interesting point. The fact that we don't talk about any height limit, does that render it outside of our potential control as an additional condition?
No. Well, the height, I'm sorry, the height is going to track the use regulations for the zoning district. And so I think it was drawn out that in a commercial district, you can have a 50-foot tall building. Not all commercial districts, but the, the bigger ones. But in ag, where, where there's more land and these are more likely to happen, it's 35 feet. So you could, I, I think it might be hard to restrict these buildings to be less than what the prevailing height is in that district because the whole point of a special exception is to be able to put conditions on it to draw that odd use in line with the typical by right use and impact. So, you know, if the farmer can have a 35-foot tall barn, but it doesn't impact you, but this 35-foot building does, I think that is where you start to get into risky waters.
Okay. A couple of the other ones that I thought were, were worth talking a little bit about, setbacks from other sensitive features of the site. Is that within our condition authority from your point of view? Like the septic example or string or well?
Yeah, so right now, we totally rely on the health department to consider setbacks from well or septic. But I think you could, and for example, you have a stream protection overlay district. We don't see it a lot because it doesn't, it, it isn't applicable in the resource preservation district, the ag and conservation, which is, you know, the lion's share of our property in the county. But for this sort of thing, I, I think you could say that notwithstanding the exemption for the stream protection overlay district in ag and cons, in the resource preserv, preservation districts, they do apply for this special use or special exception.
So our, so our general provisions would allow us to, to consider those special sensitivities of the site. That's, that's good.
I, well, I think you're, I think they do, but if, if the, if the community thinks that they're particularly important for this particular type of use because of transit nature of planning commissions and boards of supervisors, that institutional knowledge of, hey, we think this is really important is, is lost in time, it ought to be in the ordinance. And you ought to say you want a particular setback or you want to make this stream protection overlay district apply or something like that.
Well, I, I'm, I'm thinking more, you know, streams are pretty well known and predictable, but drainage fields and well sites are not. I mean, we're never going to know quite how those are configured until we're looking at a particular site. So I guess where I was more looking for was the ability for us or whoever's on the commission supervisors at the time to, you know, consider those characteristics and possibly imposing site specific conditions. It sounds like we have that.
Yeah, I think to the, to the extent that there's an impact from this particular use that is unique as compared to a typical by right use, I think it's completely appropriate to apply conditions. And so if, if this type of use might lead to more oil dripping or this or that, then a setback from a well that's greater than V D H requirements might be appropriate. Or, you know, follow that thread of thought.
And what about the, the dark skies question? Similar, if there's, if there's, you know, special lighting associated with this?
We, we did add that last time. Line 102, upon the request of the administrator or commission, level one applications shall include a light, noise, dust, burn, infume, smoke, and odors mitigation plan as well as plans for an onsite fire suppression and onsite chemical spills emergency mitigation plan. So that was the one that gave us discretion to request those things depending on the application. And then when it gets to the level two applications, it's something that they must furnish.
That was just us, the staff trying to step it in. I mean, they can be must in both, but that's a.
No, that's what we had discussed, is that be discretionary for level one and mandatory for level two.
And I, I personally think it's better for us to, to leave the judgment and flexibility to evaluate the plan based on this boat, the specific use at site rather than try to guess all the complications and things that this might be. So I personally think that's the approach. I think the other item that came up that I wanted to touch on too is this question of whether trailers constitute equipment or not? Do you have a view on that?
I'm pretty sure we crossed this bridge during the zoning enforcement, and it is a vehicle. But no, I, I'd have to dot that I.
Yeah, I think that's worth just making sure we understand. And similarly, I wasn't quite sure where the, where the reference to, you know, non-scrap type junk, rec use, rags, paper, et cetera. Wasn't quite sure where that was related to, but I tend to agree that what we're trying to do here is, is allow for scrap and parts. So is that, is that state definition or?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at the, the reference codes and the link definitions. And Art wrote that definition, so I'm not entirely sure if that's straight out of the state code. I think that the, the concept that contractor's yards have scrap parts, scrap vehicles, obviously valid. You have the old tractor and you want to keep it running, you probably ought to have two of them. And how do you, how do you handle that? How, and how does the community handle that in the ordinance without letting it get out, get out of hand? And so it's a, something to balance. And if you can find words to help you do that, that would be helpful from staff's perspective, from an enforcement's perspective and defensibility perspective.
Yeah, I mean, if you, because, you know, trash is on the list. And again, I haven't kind of mapped through all the implications of this, but I think it's a good point that the notion of kind of keeping some of this stuff around is generally for stuff that is, you know, reusable in, in some way or is for parts or, you know, metal or whatever you may reuse. And, and so it is a little, it's a little odd to have trash and paper in, you know, in that list when you're thinking of it that way. So if you think maybe we should unpack that a little bit more and true consequences, I haven't really been able to parse it all the way out. And I do think also that, and again, I'm not sure what the reference was. Maybe you could enlighten me, but are we now saying that, that no inoperable vehicles are required? Because I do tend to think that that's creating a compliance nightmare for the reasons that, that Ron articulated. You know, we, it, the limit of zero is, is, is pretty, it's pretty tough. So I do think maybe those things require of, you know, some additional thinking. I haven't had, given, had enough time to, to say what I would like to do with it, but I do think those are, I tend to agree that those might be areas that I can.
Yeah, and there are separate code sections that deal with inoperative vehicles. And, you know, maybe that's how you, for a contractor's yard and allowing a parts vehicle sort of scenario that you, you carve in an allowance of having some additional number of inoperative vehicles in, in a contractor's yard, notwithstanding it's not allowed elsewhere.
Right, so, so the reason it's relevant here is if you have disabled vehicles, you're, that's not allowed under the contract yard provision. Is that, is that a relevant?
Well, the, the reason it's here is because we had enforcement action on a property that had 30 of them, you know? So it, that were, didn't appear to be, have any nexus to the work that was being done. And so do we want that?
Well, I guess I'm asking a slightly different question is with the words that are currently before us, is there, is there something here that explicitly or implicitly says you can't have any inoperative vehicles?
Well, well, so pointing to the words we're talking about, and then let's go from there.
I'm asking about the whole thing. I'm just trying to, just trying to address the issue raised in the comment. I don't know where, and I don't know why that was. But this, the, the suggestion was that somehow we were preventing anybody from having any inoperable vehicles. And I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, so.
Maybe that's item five, yeah.
Right, so no junk can be stored on the site. That's more restrictive than the, oh, the regular ordinance, right? Because you, you are allowed to have inoperable vehicles on your site, but in limited number and, you know, they can be inside and things like that. So, I mean, if they want to have covered storage and have five inoperative vehicles inside of it, then maybe we don't care what they do with their 20,000 square feet, right? So.
Yeah, I guess that point, that point five could be a pretty tough one if it says zero. But again, I, I think it's worth gaming through a little bit more. But I thought the comment was, was worth thinking about. Thank you. That's all I had.
It would be interesting to know where that listing of scrap copper, brass, rope, rags, batteries, trash, paper, rubber, debris, or waste. It's trash, debris, or waste. Is that tied to state code in any way?
33.2-804 Junkyards, semicolon, Penalty. B is using this definition. There's a definition for automobile graveyard. There is a definition for junk and junkyard. Junk means old or scrap copper, brass, rope, rags, batteries, paper, trash, rubber, debris, or waste. Junk dismantled or wrecked automobiles or parts thereof. And old, old or scrap iron, steel, or other ferrous and non-ferrous material.
There you go, right out of the code.
Junkyard means established and replaced business that is maintained, operated, or used for storing, keeping, buying, or selling junk or for the maintenance or operation of an automobile graveyard. Junkyard includes garbage dumps and cemetery landfills.
Great. That explains it.
Well, in that, in that context, I'm starting to, I'm, I can say.
Go ahead, Gary.
Sorry. In that context, I can see why those things describe a junkyard. I guess for our purposes though, I think what we're trying to do is also kind of allow for some parts and storage, spare stuff to be stored. So maybe it's not so much that the definition of junkyard is a problem. Maybe it goes back to the same thing as saying no inoperable vehicles. We want, I would think, to allow some, you know, storage of partial stuff to be, to be allowed to be said that it's supportive of the contractor yard without having it necessarily turned into a junkyard. So I'm not, I, I guess the concern again is, is, you know, whether a single inoperable, inoperative vehicle is, gets you into being a junkyard and also whether we would want to allow junkyards that are not, that have like paper and trash. But, but anyway, that's a different question. And I, I think I'm, I'm, I think we can move on, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think important in all of this is that there, there is a human element with enforcement. So a human zoning administrator has to review a situation and decide whether it's, you know, junk is in the eye of the beholder sort of thing. And, and that person's interpretation might or might not align with the owner. And so if the owner's agreed by that interpretation, then they appeal the notice of violation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so then you have five individuals who are going to look at that and decide what junk in the, the eye of them is and whether it aligns or doesn't align with the ordinance intended in the ordinance. And then either the applicant or the, the, the person who's operating or the county, if they feel they're aggrieved by the decision that B C A made. if they feel they're aggrieved by the decision that BCA made, they could appeal to the Circuit Court and decide, the judge can decide, you know, what junk means. And if we don't like that, we can a, a, appeal to the Court of Appeals. And if we don't like what the Court of Appeals three judges say, then we can appeal to the Supreme Court. And if we don't like what they say, too bad.
Well, the only problem with Gary with all that, it seems like all that's getting to be standard operating procedure.
It's unfortunate, yeah.
So, I mean, the, the reality of the situation is, is if you got twenty, ten acres, you got basically less than a half an acre that you can do something with. And we're going to define where that half an acre is. It's going to be, you know, it's going to be defined in an area and it's going to have the buffer. And within that area, you're going to have to be able to move around. So that, that 20,000 square feet is not all going to be covered. There's going to be paths, the, and access points. So out of that 20,000 square feet, you might get a usable area of 10,000 to 15,000 feet, you know, out of that usable area. And, um, scrap, you know, inoperable vehicles, I'm, I'm thinking, we have a, we have a crane operator in this county and he stores his equipment in, um, Falkir. And maybe he wants to get it closer to Rapid Henning and he brings it out here and finds a half an acre someplace. And he dismantles and erects, uh, steel structures. And if he brings home a ten eye beams, that's iron and it's going to be sold for scrap or used on another building. So if somebody complains, there, there, you have to address that issue with time and money. So, uh, I think the realistic way you look at this, it's not going to be completely covered. It's going to be less of a use than, than the site size. And then if you go to covered storage, uh, and also with the 20,000 square foot, if you disturb, uh, that area, you got to get a DEQ permit if you go over 10,000 square feet, right Gary?
Uh, you get a lane disturbed permit.
Yeah.
Uh, if you go over an acre, you gotta go to DEQ.
Yeah.
So 10,000 is through this county and over acres to DEQ.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's additional levels of supervision that's going to apply to this, so, um, and you, in terms of the height of the building, uh, I've been in a lot of ag buildings that are greater than 35 foot, uh, or equal to 35 foot, where they have a shop on the first level where they can bring in a, a combine or something like that with, and it has a normal pitch roof. And then they made it higher so that they have part storage on the second floor. That's just a, a basically a loft, but it's part storage. So it sounds like 35 feet is, is high, but it, it, it does happen, you know? And whether it happens in the county here or not, I don't know. And there's probably some barns in this county around that are much higher than 35 feet. So there are structures already in ag zones that is, is, is in this kind of height range. So I'm, I'm almost inclined that, you know, we, we, we take, uh, line five out or substantially modify it.
Well, that's what's going to be my question is, is should we make it percentage based on the number of total vehicles? How many year inoperable vehicles you are allowed to have? I mean, that seems maybe a, a way to do it, but you know, more than what 15% of your total vehicle count?
Yeah, I, um, so, you know, one of the things we wanted to accomplish here, particularly with the, the mitigation plan was put the, put the onus on the applicant to identify the issues with the permit and provide you the solutions for those issues. So then if, if we travel through, um, legal action, then, you know, we're just, you're making decisions on the solutions they put forward on the, the problems they identified. Uh, so one way to, in, in that vein, one way to tackle this sort of prob, issue is to put a maximum number, but overtly state, um, that, or less, uh, or a less, smaller, lesser number, um, is determined, uh, through a condition of the permit or something like that. Uh, so that if somebody comes to you with a use that is particularly sensitive and meaningful of parts vehicles and they can explain to you why they are sensitive to that and they can explain to you why it's not a problem because their site is a thousand acres and they're using the center of 20 acres, uh, and there's no wells or streams anywhere near it, then maybe it doesn't matter. Uh, whereas in another site, if it's, you know, the, a long strip of property, it's right along the road and there's no part of that property that's more than 200 feet or 300 feet away from the road, maybe that's not the site for it because there's a stream that runs along the back. So, uh, you can try to, to build that flexibility in rather than have firm limitations.
I, I don't see anybody, you know, we're talking about somebody move, coming into the county and buying a property to do this. Uh, you know, in a, in one way, we have a, a lot more flexibility, uh, when it gets to 25 acre size. Uh, in the 10 acre size with a half an acre, I really don't see anybody coming into county that is, is going to try to buy 10 acres to use a half an acre of it. Uh, of all the properties I've seen sold in, in, uh, Falkir County over the years for, um, contractor's yard, uh, e, even small ones, they, they've never really looked at anything, uh, less than, uh, around two acres in size to, 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 to do it on. So, you know, the, the half an acres, the 20,000 square foot is still kind of, really kind of in a small contractor's yard basis, you know? A half an acre, that's.
10,000 acres is pretty costly out here. Or 10 acres is costly out here to only use half an acre.
Yeah, to use a half an acre, you know? It's, uh, yeah, so.
Ten, 10,000 is really expensive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, I, I think we've done a lot to control the situation by the size of the parcel that's required.
So what, what do you think we should do? I don't need to put anybody on the spot, but we've got the inoperable vehicle language as number five in Level One and number six in Level Two, should we?
I, I like Gary's suggestion of, of, again, not making that a, an absolute ban, but to, to, you know, give us again, the, the flexibility of a maximum number of percentage. I, I, I would suggest rather than try to precisely wordsmith that, it feels to me like the five precision with an outright, you know, limit of zero is, is probably unworkable and I, I would prefer to try to make it flexible and maybe ask staff to, to do that.
I, I would like to go along with what Al recommended. I think we need to strike number five out because we have, you would have a difficult time in describing what is junk. And also an inoperable vehicle or inoperable equip, piece of equipment. You go to that contractor's yard, it, it may look like it's inoperable, but he may be able to show you that he, he can move it. So then it's operable.
And it's a half an acre, 20, it's less than a half an acre when you're dealing with, you know, a 10 acre site.
I don't think it's just about the squeeze there.
Anyone else?
Okay, question. Um, what happens to my, where do we, where does somebody stand at if they, uh, the 10 acres covers from 10 to 25 acres? Or 10 to 24.99?
So if, what 10 to 25, right? If you have 1,000 acres, you can do a Level One, right? You just have to have at least 10 acres.
Uh huh.
Uh, so once you meet that 10 acre threshold, then you can have a contractor's yard that, um,
Oh, I see.
That has, you know,
Gotcha.
50 cars or whatever. But if you want to have the next higher intensity level,
Gotcha.
Then you have to have at least 25 acres.
Okay, gotcha.
You could also have 1,000 acres.
Gotcha.
You just can't do it with 24 or nine.
And in theory, if somebody comes in requesting a, uh, Level Two and they got 50 acres, and can we say, well, we, we feel that the use you're proposing is, is in an area with, with site issues, this and that, that we feel more like a Level One's appropriate?
Well, they're coming to you with the use, right? And so they know what intensity level they need, how many pieces of equipment they have and all that stuff. Um, so I don't know, I, I think that's up to them to decide what, what they're applying for. Now, I think it would be unreasonable to say, well, in this particular parcel, I'd be a lot more comfortable approving a Level One, but impacts than a Level Two impacts. Now, that may be meaningless to them because they have a business that needs a Level Two.
But we approve it.
You, you, it's up to you.
Right, yeah. But we could do that.
I think so.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, what you couldn't do is, um, allow, try to craft some conditions that allows a Level Two like unit to, to slip into the Level One door, right? You do, well, you know, you got 52 pieces of equipment, but everything else looks great. Uh, we'll allow you to do it on 10 acres.
Right.
Uh, and, and that door's closed by, you know, that 50 number or the acreage number or the covered storage or the outside storage, you know? Those are those triggers to put them in a, in the new pool, so to say.
Yeah, I don't know what is a thousand things, but I own 200 acres. I want to apply for four Level Two yards. Can I do it?
Yeah, I think you can. And we, our uses are not mutually exclusive. However, I would say, you know, if you did four at once, planning commission is going to look at and say, wow, that's pretty intense. That's, that's a lot of impact on your neighbors, uh, and that might be too much to bear. If you came in and did one and then you operated for five years and, and your neighbors know, you know, you're there and you say, yeah, this worked out pretty well, I want another one. And they can say, well, is this a Level One or are we now talking about two Level Ones right next to each other, which all suddenly turns into a Level Two? And can you meet those requirements? But sooner or later, it's, it's the planning commission, the board supervisors, public hearings reviewing it and deciding whether the impacts are worth it. And, and so you could also have a contractor's yard and a tourist hub, right? Two different uses, both going through a special exception process, but whichever one came first kind of laid the groundwork for the second one of whether that incremental impact is acceptable.
Are we still pushing these off of the primary, our primary highways and down the secondary roads?
It's, it's not written that way now. Uh, and so that was kind of traded out for, um, setbacks and whether the setbacks or yards, yards are appropriate as written, uh, that's for, you know, the planning commission and community to decide. Right now, on Route 211, there's 200 foot setback, uh, from the center of the nearest lane. So for the Level One, it's basically status quo for 211. Now, that would apply to all roads, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but maybe for this use, you don't want, maybe it's 500 feet, I don't know. If you need, if you have, need 10 acres and you can only use 20,000 for outdoor storage, storage and 10,000 for covered storage, then, you know, maybe a, a larger setback. And that's how the community went at the utility solar. You need a lot of land and you need a huge buffer. And if you can make the economies work out of that, more power to you. Pali.
Well, if it, um, if it pleases the rest of the commission, I would, I'd like to go ahead and put these revisions to the board supervisors in September and get feedback, especially on the, the two, uh, talking points, the setbacks and inoperable vehicles and see what they would be appro, find appropriate.
So, 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 so Madam Chairman, I just want, one more thing to point out, you know, uh, this chart here, the special exception chart here, uh, showing the, uh, uh, the activity. Basically, uh, four items have been approved in, in 17 years.
Right, yes.
So, um, I mean, is the number relevant? Yes. Is it excessive? Matter of opinion, but its impact has been, I think, probably nominal.
And then there's some, some number of, of uses that predate 1986 or, or the 1973.
We, we talked about line five being removed. So is that appropriate to talk about that more?
Absolutely.
So what I gathered was that if, if, if you send this to the board in September, um, you, you're basically saying, hey, here's a current version. The planning commission has a lot of questions on whether or how the inop vehicles and junk should be included or not included, the number or not a number, and what the setbacks should be. And do you have strong opinions on that and everything else? And then have that feedback come back to you? Or do you want to send a more definitive recommendation on those two things?
Have we really talked about setbacks extensively tonight?
No.
No, but they were changed from last time.
Yeah. So maybe the board has a strong feeling about what setback should or shouldn't be and that will help guide you, uh, so.
Well, the board, our board talked about it last month, right?
I think in the context of, um, the way it was drafted before, uh, not allowing them to be on a primary highway or arguably the best access is, uh, which forces them to be on a secondary road, uh, I think the thought, my takeaway was that's probably, we don't want to push these to a secondary highway automatically. Therefore, if they're going to be allowed on any road, public road, then what is, what is it about them on a primary road that we don't really like? And it's probably that, and I said, the reason that they were excluded because those are scenic corridors, right? When you roll down 2, 211, that's where the 20,000 cars a day are. That's where the bulk of the humans who come into our community, that's what they see. And so that's your greatest ability to affect, uh, that visual, you know, what, what they perceive. If you don't allow them on the primary. The other way is to say, okay, you're allowed on a primary with a proper entrance, but you have to be back from the road. So how far back? And what is effective screening? We got into that subjective language before, which I think through this special exception process, that subjective language is okay. They're going to have to tell you what effective screening is and you're going to have to decide if it is effective or not when you issue the permit and what, whether you're going to require a berm or trees or whatever.
Yeah, and it's kind of interesting, uh, in speaking of what you just talked about, it's not exactly, uh, well, it really is. You go from Culpeper to Remington, 429, uh, as you get close to Remington, Culpeper County, on the right-hand side, a person, uh, built a contractor's yard and brand new, uh, and they put in a berm along the road, uh, treat it. And basically it's, it's about 15 acres in size and it's being used as a contractor's storage yard with Dominion Power, you know, between the trucks and the poles and everything in there. And it's, uh, it was designed with gravel and, you know, erosion control, EMP ponds and all this stuff. So this is a very current new example of.
You see that a lot in, in, uh, mineral extraction, sand pits or, or gravel pits. They have a big berm around you, have no idea what's happening over there, but there's actually a massive hole in there.
That's interesting, Al. I never knew that was there and I go by there all the time. I'll have to look for it.
Yeah, yeah. You can see it before you get to it. You can see behind the berm.
I was just by that way today. I didn't see it.
What have our difficulties here is we're not flat, right? So, uh, you might not see it from 522, but the folks on Red Oak Mountain see it all day long.
We could use a berm a little further south where they got tens of thousands of those insurance cars.
Oh, yeah.
Gee whiz.
Yeah, yeah. So it sounds like we've really got the, uh, setback thing addressed the way the board wanted it between last month and this month. And it just comes down to what we do with line five tonight, whether we want to keep it in or take it out.
I'll, I'll move that we take line five out.
Okay, so that would be line five for the Level One and line six for the Level Two? I think it's, it occurs in those places.
That no junk or inoperable vehicles or inoperable equipment may be stored at the site.
Right.
Yeah. I know you agree, Tommy. We've mentioned it, right?
Do we need to make a motion on this?
I just want to see what the, you know, government says just before I. Really, an inoperable piece of equipment still falls under the fifty unit count.
Great.
Yeah, so you still, you know, you just, you get outside of managing the site, you still got fifty pieces, whether they're operable, inoperable.
Yeah, so staff was looking for an enforcement mechanism when, you know, the looks like a duck sort of thing, you go into a site and you say, well, this is not a contractor's yard. And so how, how do we, when we go into it and it's a, you know, it looks a lot more like a junkyard, we need to be.
But don't we say it has to be all equipment that, that's.
Is it, that is applicable, but.
Applicable to his business. So, I mean, a plumber shouldn't have, if he's a plumber, then he shouldn't have a, a pan.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
That holds.
That's a very valid point.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're still waiting for a second or discussion is appropriate, but I'm, I'm concerned that by simply taking it out to the point just discussed that, you know, all fifty of the vehicles could be inoperable and we could be back to, you know, what really isn't a contractor's yard but is a junkyard.
And, and I think we would probably have a zoning violation and we'd go through that subjective process that is, you know, B C A, courts, et cetera, and it would have to get ironed out that way. If you wanted some concrete, if you wanted, you know, definitely to have firm authority and you said, there's six inoperative vehicles, you need to get rid of one unless you can make one of them run, uh, or pull or whatever, you know? That was, that was pretty easy to get compliance for those points in that other case. And those charges, there were four charges, three of them kind of settled out pretty quickly because they evaded them. They got rid of the in-ops, they got rid of the extra trucks and they got rid of some junk scrap piles. Uh, but the last one was too much equipment outside storage. It was outside storage, too much outside storage, which is a listed accessory use that anybody can have. And this base, doing this expands that outside storage a lot if you get this special exception.
I'm sorry, it sounds like you're saying we still have that authority without provision five and that we have other avenues to, to deal with this, including those Mr. Hendry's focused on, which is it's a small part of the property anyway, but also others if in the extreme that I'm talking about, none of them work, but, and they're not, you know, it sounds like we have, you know, either related to the fact that they need to be supportive of the contract and that this is a, a, you know, that the applicant is a contractor at some point. That seems like all of those things would provide some sort of protection against just truly an unauthorized junkyard trying to disguise itself as a contractor yard.
Yeah, I, I think so. I think three, in this case, all material goods, supplies, parts, vehicles, pieces of equipment stored or found on the site must be limited to things that are customarily used in the contractor's ordinary course of business. Uh, and that does provide an awful lot of protection. And if there is junk, quote-unquote junk, or as defined in the other state code, uh, section that doesn't meet that definition, then I think, you know, you're not allowed to do that.
Yeah, I, I, I think, sorry, I just want another thought on that. You know, I think work, uh, equipment customarily used or business implies that it works.
Yeah, well, I think it also could mean that if it's customarily used in the ordinary course of business, that might be a parked vehicle for the, you know, I've got five dump trucks and one of them is, doesn't work, but I use it for these things.
They be part, um, H V A systems or plumbing systems?
Yeah.
You just have stacks and stacks of water heaters or.
And it's going to be in a limited amount of outdoor or indoor storage, and you're going to be allowed to do that. Yeah.
But they must be limited to your line of business and fit for their intended use.
Yeah.
Well, they're fit because there's parts inside that.
Well, exactly, exactly.
Sorry, uh, I just wanted to say I'm not sure we're in the order with.
I think you're.
His motion, but I would certainly like to see it. I, I don't, I'm, I'm supportive of changing it, whether we can, whether we just scratch it or probably come up with something we're, I'm still not totally settled on, so I'm not ready to second the motion, but I do agree that it, as it stands, it should be, it should be changed.
Will we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'd, I'd like to make another comment with reference to what Gary just said. I think that if we leave this in here, no junk, inoperable vehicles, you're placing a burden on somebody to determine what is junk and what is inoperable. And I don't think we should put our staff people in that position. Would venture to say you can take three different people to a site and they would not necessarily agree on what's junk, what's inoperable.
It sounds like a second. Are you seconding Al's motion?
Yes, I'll definitely, if, if Al has made the motion, does this strike five and, and six?
Yes.
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Tommy. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Gary, were you an aye?
I was an aye.
Thank you, Gary.
So with that, I, I will, uh, with your, uh, permission, share this with the board this month, seek feedback, instruction, and report back next month. That takes us to the next item, ordinance transient lodging discussion. Gary, if you could let us know, uh, any headway on this.
I don't think we did anything.
Okay.
I don't hold that there's any direction.
Well, it looked like you added a bunch of other examples of definitions from other places. Was that not new?
To tell you the truth, Gary, I don't, I don't think.
No, I think we saw it last week.
Yeah.
Oh, well, for what it's worth, I didn't see any here. It looked much better than ours in terms of defining things, um, you know, defining all the things that we actually deal with and only the things we are likely to deal with and not having a lot of confusing extra definitions. So my feeling, I could spend some more time looking at those alternative definitions is that I think we should focus on better regulation of the uses as we currently have them defined and not, I, 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 I've not seen anything that makes me want to go back and re, revisit those initial definitions. There may be one or two that are extra, but I feel like you pretty recently as the, as the commission and then the, the board went through those definitions, what we did get to perhaps sufficiently is the requirements associated with them.
Well, I, I mean, I, I agree that I, I looked through the listings last month and I didn't see anything that I liked better than what we had. And I, I trust that Michelle has our notes from last month because I do remember we had quite a bit of feedback from her on this. And are we just waiting for them to be made?
I was there and I am not, I apologize that I don't recall what, what, if any direction was given.
My recollection is that we had decided to, or had talked about taking some of the, uh, types of lodging out of conservation, and we had also talked about road standards and, um, making a kind of step road standard, um, language that made sense, given the intensity of the use, so that there was more uniformity, um, you know, having currently just tourist homes on a pay, on a state maintained paved road or type two road and not really any other requirements for the more intense uses.
Right, so a tourist home and a bed and breakfast is allowed on a private road so long as it meets type two standards. A country inn or a resort is allowed on a private road, period.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, so those were the kinds of things I recollect. And then the other thing that Mr. Light had very kindly reminded us of was the, um, the idea of, uh, the eco resort. When it was brought before us, uh, you know, those were complete units with a kitchen and a bathroom, and at what point is that a dwelling unit? And is there any concern when you have these uses coming before you, uh, and say that business doesn't make it, and then you're left with a higher intensity of dwellings than you would normally tolerate in that zoning?
Yeah, yeah, so I, I do recall that conversation and, and it is a function of the use of the structure, um, and similar to, for example, in a commercial village, you aren't allowed to by right have a single-family home residence, couldn't just go build a house without a special exception, but you can't do a tourist home or a by right. So, okay, you, you build a tourist home, it looks an awful lot like a house, you decide to stop renting it for less than thirty days, but you're not allowed to use it as a house unless you come to the board and get a special exception. It's, it does set up an odd situation where you, you could have these, a country inn with several lodging units that could be tent sites or, and it goes to this definition, and, and that gets approved and then the business was a terrible business model, it doesn't work, they can't monetize it.
The bare-sweet old people.
You have these structures and then somebody wants to start renting them for more than thirty days, which they're not allowed to do because now it's more than one dwelling on a lot of parcel. So, I mean, that's a real issue, um, not contemplated by the code at all right now.
A, a number of years ago, I guess it's been twenty or more, uh, David Cole came in for this culinary institute he was going to build on Harris Holla, right on the edge of town, and he was going to do this kitchen, commercial kitchen, bring in people to teach how to cook and had a bar attached to it, you know, it was kind of odd. So I asked the zoning administrator at that time, I said, well, what are we going to have here when, when this is no longer a culinary institute? The reply was, we're going to have a restaurant in an agriculture zoned area.
Which is not allowed at all.
Right.
Not a use provided for, period, but.
I think if we had gone further down the road on the echo, um, site, I think I would have said that that was more of a campground situation where it was laid out.
Yeah, so maybe that's a definition you want to look at because that definition for a country inn gets into this odd wording of whether, you know, occupancy, uh, whether separate campsite, so I can't remember exactly what it says.
Do we want to pull in the campground definition then and look at that too for next time?
That's a totally, you can. There's a tent campground and then a different R V one, and that one, getting back to roads, says that the paved travel way has to be served with because you're pulling trailers.
Right.
Right. Uh, whereas if you have a resort, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I, I think all of these things are pertinent. I, I felt like, and I'm sorry, I've lost track of where exactly this is, but when we were trying to parse down the, the sort of, did this violate density point, just seemed, seemed like it did, it did, it did, until you got to the part where one of the definitions said, for purposes of density, these should not be considered. And that, that, it was that parenthetic remark that seemed to make it odd and specifically prevent something that seemed counterintuitive. And I, I do think we should revisit that and understand it. I couldn't at the time or now figure out why that would have been worded that way. I'm guessing someone, I think I heard someone say it was about, maybe it was the culinary institute, there was something that somebody had in mind, but I couldn't think of what it was.
Well, you know, the density applies as a, as kind of a by right basis, and somebody has to come to the county and ask for special permission to do one of these transient lodging things. They're not dwelling units as defined, um, but they have to come to you and explain why that particular parcel and their particular project and the number of, of lodging units as opposed to dwelling units makes sense. And that gets really odd when the lodging units begin to look like homes and the business model of renting them for less than thirty days somehow goes out the door and they want to rent them for more than thirty days, which presto change-o, they're now dwelling units and it's not allowed. So I agree, it's confusing, but that is absolutely the way we're set up.
Well, I, I would take exception a little bit with your original premise that those structures, to me, met the definition, fit the definition of dwelling unit, except that elsewhere, they were said that they're not considered dwelling units for purposes of density.
Well, yeah, if you can see your screen right now, I pulled up dwelling, the definition of dwelling, uh, and so building a portion thereof, but not a mobile home designed for use for residential occupancy. The term dwelling shall not be construed to mean a motel, rooming house, hospital or other accommodation used more or less for transient occupancy. And so I think this is, is worded this way to allow the ordinance and the board to permit conference centers, country inns, that have their own lodging unit density requirements built into their special standard. You can have twenty rooms per X number of acres for a country inn. And, and that is recognized, it's a more intense use, it might not be appropriate everywhere, but it could be appropriate somewhere in our community, and, and so have been permitted. But, but if they stop being more or less transient occupancy and they become occupied for, you know, rented for more than thirty days, then they are dwelling units. And then you are in a violation situation. And so I guess those sort of decisions need to really be thought about as you're considering approval of a transient use, a country inn or, or whatever. And, and the type, you know, type of use they're going to do, like Blue, Blue Rock came and asked for these three eight room, I don't remember how many rooms there were, however many rooms. They can't rent those as apartment buildings. They don't have a permit to do that. If they attempted to, it would be a violation because we don't want apartment multifamily in that area of the county. We think it's okay to have a hotel or a, or inn in that area of the county, but not an apartment.
Could you scroll down to the definition of dwelling unit? See, this to me is part of the, the conflict because maybe it didn't fit the, the definition of dwelling, but our ordinance refers to the density, I think refers to dwelling unit. And I believe those yurts could potentially, you know, they had the, they had the complete things, they had cooking, bathroom, sleeping, eating, sanitation. So to me, they met the definition of dwelling unit, they just oddly were defined out of the definition of dwelling. And that's part of what makes this squirrely to me.
Yeah, but I think the ordinance doesn't work if, if a, you know, a suite-type hotel room with a kitchen and bathroom and all those things is, isn't allowed. I mean, so, uh, but you can change any of this through public hearings.
All right, so we'll look for more from Michelle on. All right. So, we'll look for more from Michelle on that for next month unless anyone has anything else. Data center, new business? I did request this and I have been reading the FAWC year ordinance, but I'm, I'm not prepared to really work on it tonight. And I wasn't sure if anyone had had a chance to read other ordinances or had any input.
I think last time you talked about maybe you would look through the current use table and current definitions to see which of them, if somebody looked at it, to kind of a, from a sideways view, could, could construe one of our current uses and current definitions to also, to include a data center. And if they did, that maybe you want to clarify the definition for that use to make it abundantly clear that it is not one of those things.
Right.
Yeah, I specifically thought it was warehouse and telecommunications facility that where we and others have suggested we make it clear that data center truck shall not be driven through those openings.
Yeah. I think those were the two that have been mentioned so far. And there was a, a suggestion that there should be holistic view to make sure there aren't others that could be similarly construed.
And then we were talking about the, the, how can you write something out of another use without defining it itself? Then trying to get our arms around that.
Yeah. And I think there are some state definitions in the taxation code that we can lean on.
Oh, great. Does anyone have anything else on that?
Mike Bryan said, why can't we just say no data centers? Can we?
I think you can't. I mean, there's, in say like your, there's use regulations. You know, 170, 37 or somewhere around there, 38, that I think you could probably make a blanket statement like that.
There's a tremendous amount of water and power here in those things, tremendous. So, they can't all be allowed on our two acres of industrial zoning.
You could do that.
Well, I mean, when you read FAWC here, that's basically what they've done.
They just have a lot of it.
Yeah. So, anything, anyone that would come in with that use, they would, they would need to apply for the rezoning first.
I, I would think, you know, you, if you want to look at accounting for where there's cracks, you have to look at Culpeper because Culpeper has allowed data centers to go into ag areas.
But I think they've invited them.
Yeah, invited, opened the doors, here, go right here. And right next to historical property with a scenic easement on it. I mean, they just basically said, we don't care. And bingo, it went there down Route Three.
Yeah.
So.
So, but is a use provided for and, and.
Yeah.
I, I think there is some nuance in, I didn't like that I was reading news feeds from across the state that, you know, picked up that Rappahannock was going to shut the door to data centers. I don't think you want to poke the bear. And, and I don't think.
Let's open the door.
I don't.
To those two acres.
Yeah. I don't think you want to do that so overtly, but I think you can shore things up. But if you put in like a one sentence in that says, thou shall not, and the general assembly comes around and, and says, you know, you can't prohibit things, then, I don't know. I, I just think it's softer landing if you just have it as a use not provided for and shore up any use that is, can be construed to be that, to make sure it's, those are clear. But I think equally you could put a sentence somewhere that says, you can't do a data center that's defined by state code, whatever, whatever, whatever. I hope that it's okay.
Well, I was wondering about library, but we have an overly specific definition of library. It's the Rappahannock County Public Library or any branch there are.
You get the Rappahannock County Government Data Center. You can have those in any industrial zone. I don't know.
Yeah, my, my concern about starting down the path, and I don't, maybe we've done this, I don't think we have. I'm a little concerned in concept of starting to try to articulate a list of things you can't do. I think our zoning is structured fundamentally to, to talk about the things you can do. And anything that isn't on the list of things you can do, you can't do. So, I, I, I'm a little concerned that we don't muddle that up. I'd rather tighten up the definitions of things we say you can do and stick to that principle that seems to be the framework of our, of our use of our descriptions.
What about office? That might be something we should look at too.
There, I have to talk to Art. There might be a way to define it and say, in that definition, that it is inconsistent with permitted uses, all other permitted uses in the county, right? Other than try to go find 10 definitions and uses and modify them with a sentence, there might be a way to define the one thing and say, it isn't the other stuff.
Yeah. Well, that's another way to do it, that's sort of in-between.
Yeah.
The old definitions and trying to carve out a specific prohibition for it that's probably more consistent.
You know, here again, some years ago, you know, the word mobile home was a really dirty word in Rappahannock County. I mean, it was a dirty word, talking about mobile homes. And we basically denied them. They said they could put a mobile home in an agricultural district. And that held for a long time. And then I don't know whether it was Clayton Homes or whoever, but they went to the general assembly, shelled out a few dollars and the state said you could not allow mobile homes in a zoning area.
In ag.
In ag. So, bingo. You know, so you poked the bear and the bear woke up and did it and have, has it had an impact? A little, there's been some, but, you know, somebody once told me that it's a, it's not surprising that politicians in Richmond can be bought. It's surprising how cheap they can be bought. So, you know, I think, you know, something simple here, I think solves the issue that if there is an issue here.
That sounds good. So, we'll, we'll look for more on that next time. Knowing, acknowledging that we had three items we were asking staff to work on in summer vacations and all being what they are. Then we have our continued list of direction from the supervisors. Anything for roundtable discussion? No? All right. Our next regular meeting is September 18th. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
A second?
I'll move.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hey, hey, well, thanks for accommodating my beak away.
Did you see George today, Gary?